I think so. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Clerk Kellinger, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tousen.
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Jay Simmons. Councilmember King.
Present.
Six present and one absent, there's a quorum.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Jay Simmons?
I move to excuse Councilperson Jay Simmons.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please stand as you're able for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Do the flag. Thank you, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Still moved?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any amendments, updates, changes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is our opportunity for public comment, you'll have three minutes to address council, we'll start with those who signed up on the list. When your name is called, please come up to the podium, give us your name, your address if you are comfortable, and then the timer will start, and then we'll move to those who are joining us from Zoom. Thank you. So first I have Nicholas Calkins? Calkins? Oh, perfect, okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm assuming, Jesse?
No, I actually wanted to speak briefly.
Oh, please do.
I'm Jesse Craniac, hello. I actually wanted to support one of the other businesses that's here appealing today, because they're a neighbor from my house, and it's Guy 3 Ventures. I haven't actually met them, I don't, are you guys friends? Hello, I'm Jesse. You guys are my neighbors over there. I just wanted to say, I live at the corner of Forest and River, and for years we've had rats living, they live in our yard, they like tunnel under our fences, and they're a problem, like they get in fights with our dog and stuff. And they're not huge, they're about this big. We're by the river, we're by that blighted property that sat there forever, just, you know, falling apart, I don't know what was in those grain silos, probably grain, I'm assuming full of rats. They burrowed into our house twice, I had to take cement and like fill in, you know, the cement, and then you gotta trap all the rats again in the house. And I have a little kid. It's unsanitary, and to see the city, and I'm not saying the city did this, to see one person make a decision that like takes an investor that's taking a blighted property like that and investing what I'm assuming is over a million dollars at least, and making a change, and then any kind of, you know, stopping that kind of progress to me is just so crazy. And I just wanted to let them know as a resident that I just strongly oppose that. So aside from my business, I just want to put my two cents in on their project, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next I have Jonathan Schultz? Schwartz, okay, thank you. And then Nathan, can you say your last name for me? Clark?
I'm just here representing.
Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council during public comment?
Three minutes, sorry.
Three minutes.
First of all, I wanna, we went to a funeral service for Al Robinson, and I wanna thank Attorney Carl, well not Carl, but John. I wanna thank Attorney John Barr so much for attending that service for a man that served the city and the council. He showed interest that he cares. I wanna thank Nicole and Roland also for being there for the city and their ward. Counsel, I came before you guys at the last council meeting, and I was talking about how people be bored during council meeting, and how they be bored on doing even the worst of things because of too much talking. So I'm gonna ask you guys again, and I'm gonna keep doing it until I get, if I have to get a petition, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna ask you guys again to come up with some kind of method that folks around the council table cannot get any more time than the folk that's in the audience. Maybe five minutes for them, three minutes for us. Now, a little while ago, the City of Ypsilanti had asked the council to put in place police officers to train young police officers that they might keep the city police department running in a efficient manner so far as, you know, training goes. We wanna know where is that training? We wanna know who's training who? Because I see evidence, I see evidence in the streets and at meetings where policemen are, that they do not know what they're talking about, and they are not trained proper, so we want to know where this process is. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Mr. Barr.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name's John Barr, I'm the city attorney and have been for some years. I had the pleasure to serve under Al Robinson, former city council member. Al Robinson was an amazing person. He was a warrior, he was a paratrooper, he ended his military service as a lieutenant colonel. He served on city council as a public service, he was a Washtenaw County Commissioner. He was a businessman, he ran a seafood restaurant, and I got to know him as a council member and also as a businessman. The Boy Scouts had a fish dinner, and he prepared all the fish for the dinner, and I think he did it at cost, he was just an amazing man. When I think of Al Robinson on the city council, I think of, some years ago, there was an ad for the Hutton Company, the Hutton, I think it was AF Hutton was a stockbroker, and they ran ads, and it said, "When AF Hutton speaks, people listen." That was Al Robinson. When he spoke, people listened. I'll miss him.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Would anyone else like to address council in the physical audience before we move to Zoom? Say, clerk, is there anyone on Zoom?
If anyone participating virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now, and you'll have three minutes to address council. No hands are raised, council.
Thank you. All right, so seeing none, we will close audience participation and move into the appeal hearings. So we are here tonight to hear several appeals. We were provided with a memo from Attorney Barr on the process or the suggested procedure, and so, Mr. Barr, I don't know if you wanted to go over this, or would you like me to just read what you gave us? Okay. So the suggestion is that we, I will call each case individually, there'll be a report from staff first, then we will have the petitioner's presentation. Council will then have the ability to ask questions to our petitioner. There will be an opportunity for rebuttal from staff, and then final remarks of the petitioner. And once that has happened, we will close the hearing, council will have discussion, there'll be a motion that can be put forth from a council member with support, and then make our decision. There is language here for what the motion should say, whether it's in support or if it is to deny. And so I think to not, it's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. Does anyone on council have any questions about the process this evening? All right. All right, let's get to it. So the first will be for the worst license LLC at 705 West Cross, and so staff can get started first with the worst appeal? Good evening.
Good evening, council. As it pertains to the license at 705 West Cross, to give everyone a little bit of background, and I'm gonna kind of give you all the same information on each case, kind of where they're at in the process and why the city manager chose to deny. So with 705 West Cross, there was a marijuana permit issued to them on August 19th, 2021. Per their application, they indicated they would open within one month of their approvals, of all permit approvals. They weren't required to get a site plan or special use approval because it's the one zoning district where it's not a special use, in our downtown district. And though, unless there's a footprint change, and there wasn't going to be an actual change of building. So there was no engineering required. They applied for their building permits 14 months later, and the building permits were approved on November 17th, 2022. They have not obtained a certificate of occupancy as of this point, and so the reason for the denial was failure to provide a state license and the facility ceased its operation for 120 days.
All right. We'll have, is that all you have for us?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll have a presentation from the petitioner? Hi again.
This is my second time up here for an appeal around this. A lot of new faces, congratulations on your elections. First of all, some of the things Joe just said are simply not true. Joe, licensing is not, anywhere on the thing does it say, within 30 days of city licensing? It doesn't say that anywhere, it doesn't stipulate state licensing, it doesn't stipulate city licensing, it doesn't say what kind of licensing, it just says within of all licensing. So have we obtained any state licensing?
So Jesse, can you direct your question to us, and then we'll direct them back?
Okay, so, it's just aggravating when you're put in a position where, you know, it makes it sound like you're doing something that you aren't doing. Because we hadn't obtained our certificate of occupancy as of yet, but I have one here right here. The city also, as you all know, because you have a DDA resolution there that says they support it, and Joe's well aware of why we took so long to open. After we did this appeal, you know, the appeal, the process caused some problems with marijuana licensing in the city, and the council then decided to open up licensing to anybody that wanted to get a license. And we had been stuck with promising, you know, rooftop garden, solar energy, all these things that were very expensive to do, but now anybody can get a license. And we thought that that was unfair, so why did we have to do all these things? Nobody, anybody else can just get a license now and they don't have to do any of this. And so, we were going back and forth about what to do, and then council put a moratorium on all licenses. But there had already been a few more that like jumped in in the meantime. So at that point, we were like, all right, we're in this position where there's a lot more licenses in the playing field than there were originally, and we still have to come up with all this, you know, all these things are very expensive. No one in my group has a lot of money, it's not like we're, you know, rolling the money or something. So I came back to Joe and the DDA a couple times, two meetings, and presented them with some alternatives. One of them was, there's a building sitting next to us that has been vacant for five years. I said, you know, it'd be a lot cheaper for us to just do our build out in here, it's already white boxed out, than it would be to split worst bar in half. Splitting worst bar in half would be more expensive, would take longer. But I know that the city manager had good intentions when she had brought these other companies in, and given them the extra points in the first appeal. She was trying to take blighted properties, places that weren't, you know, in business for a long time, NIPSY, and opening up, activating storefronts. I thought, well, if somebody were to do that to Neds, you know, that's a positive for the city, so, you know, there's no way that they would refuse this. So I offered to, you know, we have to do everything we said we would do in that plan, but we'll just do it in the space right on the other side of this wall. And they said no, but that did take a lot of planning and time to, you know, get to that point. I had another meeting with them again, and they recommended that I apply for the grant that I received. The grant stipulates that you cannot start construction until you've been approved for the grant. So we got approved for the grant December 18th. Nine days later, I started construction, and we're done with construction, we have a CVO. It just, it's blindsided that, you know, in the middle of this process, one hand of the city's like patting us on the back, the other one's smacking us in the face. My whole life savings is in this. We don't have, you know, I don't own the building, so I didn't improve anything I own, I just improved somebody else's building. And if you guys don't, you know, approve my appeal, then I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place where I have to litigate against the city or risk losing everything I've ever worked for in the city. So I moved here in 1999, after I got out of the military. I left, went to the P-Score, moved back here after that was over, and I've been working, you know, here for 12 years since then. It's very difficult to, you know, know that, you know, you're working so hard for, you know, somewhere, trying to make things better, trying to improve properties, and then hazily this happened to where you risk everything. So that's basically my appeal.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have counsel here?
Oh, okay. Oh, sure, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jonathan Schwartz from the Taft Law Firm, it's a privilege to speak with you tonight.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Jesse loves the city, he's a great business owner, he's jumped through a lot of hoops, he spent nearly $200,000 getting this property ready. It's going to be doing business as soon as and if you all remove this cloud from over this business. The state will let him contribute to this community. He's going to bend over backwards to make you all proud of him to contribute and give back. I really hope that the city, you know, doesn't give me any more work to do. I don't want to litigate this matter, I don't want to fight, but my client spent $200,000, and he's done any and everything, and he will continue to. So I really hope that you will reconsider the decision, that you will exercise your powers and your wisdom to allow my client to operate his business, that's his dream, and he'll do a great job doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is now the opportunity for council to ask questions to the petitioner, so I'll take hands as I see them, if you have questions for Mr. Craniac. Mayor Proton?
Hi Jesse. You know, we've talked about this before, the appeal was put in, so I have a pretty good understanding of where you've been and what you've been doing. The thing that stands out to me is the 14-month delay in getting the permits pulled for the work? What was involved in that?
So like I mentioned, once we got an approval, well, when we first got approval from council, council had then started litigating, or they had started having problems with some other licenses. There were some lawsuits that happened with the city, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but there were, I think, several lawsuits that happened, and the city then just said, you know what, we're gonna open up all licensing back up again. So part of the, so exactly the license was a competition among other licenses. And to get points, you had to say, you know, to commit to certain things, and each one of these items costs money to, you know, renovate the building. Something like solar could, you know, $20,000 to $40,000. Rooftop gardens, you know, $15,000 to $30,000. And each one of these items adds, you know, significant cost. So when we saw that, just after we had gotten our appeal approved, that anybody can now get a license, and there was no competition for a license, and it was open to anybody, it didn't seem equitable anymore, it was like, why are we beholden to these building standards when anybody can just go apply for a license now as long as they hit the 500 feet from, you know, a school or, you know, whatever, as long as they can get the zoning for it? So yeah, so I did, I went back to the DDA, I went back to Joe, I talked to them, you know, I presented my case then. And then, I think, I don't remember these, it's been a while now, the exact timeline, but they did then close licensing off, I think a couple people got in. They then closed licensing back off again. I think they put a moratorium on all licensing, but again, the cap had been increased over and above what we had been, what we had, what there was when we applied, including the three licenses that got in underneath our scoring rubric. So I think there were 12 licenses, then it went to 16 or something, 17 licenses. So, you know, from a business standpoint, it's like, all right, well, there's a barrier for entry, there's this much competition, then all that changed from when we applied. And it was like, do we risk everything, and then, you know, what is it worth? So it took a while to kind of figure out, and this entire time I'm asking, you know, I'm communicating with the city, you know, are we at risk of losing our license? And they seemed, you know, every time I got an answer, no, don't worry about it, you got time, you know, this is going on with everybody, you know, everyone's having problems with the same thing. They seemed understanding. I did request a meeting with the city manager in two separate emails, she didn't answer either one of them. Everyone else in the city's been very responsive. I don't know why she refuses to communicate with me, but she does.
The delay of 14 months was then you were considering your options. Was there a point that you could have pulled a permit for the work that would have to be done regardless of where you stood relative to the other licensees, the ones that came in in your cohort and the ones that came in after?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but we could have pulled our permit right away. It's just, you know, a building permit costs money, I mean, it all costs money, it's like, we've already invested X amount of dollars, and as I've mentioned, this is all personal finances, so this is actually financed by, myself and my wife, we had a house in Atlanta that we had bought, and the real estate on it went crazy that year, and we had sold it. And between, I think we made $55,000 on it, and plus all of our savings. So, you know, paying this money out, it's not like a small matter for us. So I just, I don't, I don't like to waste money, I mean, I'm in business, I'm in restaurants, you know, it's like rubbing, we've rubbed together nickels to make a penny, it's not, you know, with food costs and all these things, it's not an easy business to be in.
So I guess my question is, is there work that needed to be done inside the building? You talked about the rooftop and various other things that were
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Your original site plan, but the permits for the things that would need to be done regardless, you know, where were those? I understand that there was a changing landscape in terms of partners and things like that as well. Was that during that time?
Well, to do our entire project, we had to actually split worst bar in half. So worst bar is owned by myself and my business partner, he owns 51% of it, I own 49% of it, but he also owns the building. And then we leased the business from him, and so as our landlord, you know, I would have, I had to make a new lease with him for the other half of the space. So we had to cut the restaurant in half, and he wanted to see, he wanted to make sure we weren't gonna just start doing construction in our business, for me to do something that wasn't gonna pan out. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Sort of, I guess I'm really not clear on that. So in that 14 months, you were negotiating with the owner of the property in terms of what you could do and what you couldn't do in terms of internal construction?
No, we had done that already previously, I had permission, I had a lease, everything was good to go. I just didn't want to pull the trigger on it unless I felt like I was comfortable making the move. And the city, what was going on, the landscape of the city wasn't making me comfortable in making a business move.
Did you petition at that time to change the nature of the agreement with the city in terms?
I did, yes. I didn't petition council, I went to the DDA, I think I had at least two meetings with them directly, and Joe Meyer was in both meetings.
And the point of that meeting was to change the nature of the permit or get grant funding to help with the construction?
I asked for concessions in what we'd originally applied for. The first time I expressed my concerns over how the process had been open to anyone, and how we were beholden to these promises we had made, which I didn't mind under the previous competitive field. But the competitive field had changed, so I was concerned that we were spending too much money to enter into a field that was saturated. The second time, I come up with a solution that I thought was very viable, I thought, you know, this will make the city manager happy, well, I'm gonna activate an empty storefront, it will cost me less money, no way they would say no, but again, they said, our hands are tied, no, you can't do it, you have to open your space. After you open, you can move, but it's like, well, at that point, we've already spent the money. And that's when I wanted to move into Neds, but that took months of planning, I had to approach Neds, it wasn't for sales, for lease, but the lease was kind of expensive. We were trying to purchase the building, because I could get an investor to help me purchase the building, because anybody will rent. But again, you know, it didn't work out, so that ate up a good four months of planning.
So then, when you were contemplating the change and proposing a change in the permit, you went to the DDA and not to the city manager and city staff? Because they're different entities, and they have nothing to do with the permit.
Well, first I wrote the city manager, and I think her mother had passed away at the time. Joe responded to me for that first meeting, he said she's indisposed, but I'll meet with you. So I did meet with Joe, and then Elise and Christopher, who've always been very helpful as far as business things go, came to the meeting as well. I did talk to all of them.
So what was your takeaway from that first meeting?
It was that I had to proceed as planned or not proceed. But I did also get the impression that the time wasn't of a necessity, I had some time to work through, you know, planning this out. I had directly asked, actually, if we were in danger of losing our license at that point, and I was told no.
And so at any time during the 14 months, were you given any indication that that was problematic?
Never, no.
You have further questions, or can we?
I'll have to think about it, yeah.
Okay. Other council members with questions? I don't know. No, does it right now? All right, Steve, did you have more questions?
I just want to note that when I was looking at the packet, I wasn't able to find Exhibit 2, the actual revocation letter. I'm assuming that it fits the same as all the others, and that it was just a simple statement of, this is the section that is relevant? Some of them, some of the complaints stated that the specified violations were highlighted?
It had like two items, one was that we had ceased operations for, yes, thank you. Failure to be provided a state license and facility ceased operations for 120 days. So we never opened, so I don't know how we ceased operations, but I'm assuming number six, failure to be provided a state license?
Are there further questions for Mr. Craniac? Given some space? All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
This is an opportunity for any rebuttal from staff if there is, and I do know that the city manager, I believe, is on Zoom as well, if she had anything that she wanted to add.
Good evening, council again.
Good evening.
One thing I will add to what Mr. Craniac said is, in going through the database, there was a CVO issued yesterday for the space, so I was incorrect when I said there was no CVO. However, it does not include the rooftop garden, which was committed to in the application. And as far as timelines for permits, permits are good for one year, and there's no assurances if they are not, if the requirements aren't met, that they will be continued. Any questions since I'm here?
Yeah, any questions for Joe? Mayor Proton?
I guess I'm still curious about the nature of the conversations, because a lot of Mr. Craniac's appeal hinges on the communications between city staff and the DDA during the period that between city staff and the DDA during the period that is claimed to be inactive. It doesn't say anywhere in the, in the revocation letter what the period of time that comprises the 120 days is. And so I'm curious about what that timeline looks like. What is, what is, where is, where are the 120 days being counted? And was that, was that specified to Mr. Kraniak when his permit was denied?
Um, I believe that, as far as the conversation with Mr. Kraniak, I did have several conversations with him. We have had conversations with council about whether or not we want to allow for permits to be transferred. Sentiment has been no. And so, you know, you can, you can transfer, you can transfer once you get a license, but that was, that was the thing. There was one almost lawsuit, but it was, it went away. And so we couldn't allow him to transfer. And as far as the, what was committed in the application, there wasn't a way for us to actually lessen those rules, a lot less of those requirements, because that was the application that was notarized and applied to at the time. So the reason, the rationale between, that the city manager made was, this has been going on for 14 months. Pulled the permit at the, you know, two months before the expiration. But there was that 14-month period, and while there were meetings, you know, no, at no point did we indicate that they would be extended forever, right? The goal of these permits were to be issued, and then there was supposed to be as expeditious of a timeline as possible. But 120 days is, we were taking that as 120 days of granting, I guess.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
So now I have two quick questions. One is, so almost recently, you were said the certificate of occupancy, right? That you said does not include the rooftop garden? And so the expectation would be that that's not being included?
Well, so this was, this was approved, so the permit that was issued for this included the rooftop garden, because that was part of the requirements. And then just looking through the notes, everything was approved except for the rooftop garden, because it was, it has not been created.
Okay, and then, and then also in accordance, so, and then the, is there agreement around the timeline that was outlined in terms of that there was an agreement to do X, Y, and Z because of the social equity, and then that got changed? And so then other folks came in afterwards, but were not held to those standards?
One permit has, well, a few permits had not been held to those standards, and some have chosen not to renew. One of them is appealing today. And so only one permit right now was not held to the same standards.
Okay, and then my last question, I think, is, oh yeah, so then about the, so the grant that they got from the DDA, so that was during this time as well? That was considered a lapse in time?
I would speak to, I would have Christopher Jacob speak to that one, because I was not part of that at all.
Yeah, Christopher, can, can you come address the question, please?
The grant approved by the DDA happened before the denial letters were made known to the DDA staff or to the board. And so we were working under the assumption that they were gonna follow through and get a license when that decision was made to issue grant funding.
So this is, but I'm just trying, so this was happening during this 14 months? That is considered like lack of movement, though. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure, like, so like, this was happening during that time? Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. My question for Joe, just around process, because I still, I don't really have a lot of clarity on this. So during this timeframe, before the appeals, there's no, there's, there's nothing in the policy or process that states that you, that we, right? The royal we, alert, folks, your window is closing, or, you know, hey, we haven't seen any movement. Can we have a conversation about this? Not in so many words, but there's no other documented communication that comes from our side of things before this denial.
Correct.
And that's by policy or by?
There's no policy on it.
No policy on that, that's, okay, that's what I meant, okay. I think that's a problem.
There's a list of conditions. So there's a list of conditions in the ordinance on how you can be denied?
Yeah, I appreciate that, I receive it. I think it's a problem that we don't, I mean, you know, okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from council or for staff?
I just want to be clear of the timeline. During the 14 months, Mr. Kraniak is, is in conversation with the DDA, who is under the impression that they will continue to have their permit and is willing to grant that. I saw the letter saying that the DDA had unanimously, unanimously supported the appeal process. So that speaks to, you know, their, their understanding of what was going on and the intention. In your estimation, is this project ready to move towards completion?
I would say, from the certificate of occupancy, they are close, right? If we want to hold them to all of the criteria they put in their rubric, there are some things that still have not been done. And so we would not issue a full unconditional permit to go to the state without all of the criteria and the rubric. But that's also, you know, if council approves this and gives direction on how to proceed, we don't have to hold people to the standards they put in their commitments. But at this point, based on the application, they are not ready to get a full certificate. This isn't even weirder one, because normally we would issue a certificate of occupancy through the planning department, but because this actually didn't require site plan or special use approval, I don't know how we would do that. We would probably, it would just be signed off to issue the unconditional permit, which, without the rooftop garden. And I haven't checked through all the checklists yet to see what it would be. So I'd say they're close, they're very close, based on the certificate of occupancy, but they're not fully there, based on the rooftop garden.
So the final question to Christopher then is, the commitment from the DDA, in terms of the grant funding, does that cover that rooftop garden?
Grant funding doesn't.
So that would answer that question. So once, if they had a permit and they were to continue, then the, the funding they've already secured would allow them to finish the work that is in the original, am I understanding that?
What they need in.
Go ahead.
Was this, would they need an additional, something else to update it, to include the garden separately?
Well, I haven't gone through those checklists, they have not requested a full unconditional approval. And so there's a lot of commitments that were made in every one of these applications, a lot of commitment. So I can tell you right now, from what I'm seeing, the rooftop garden was not. But there's also local hiring commitments, and there's a lot of commitments that were put in these. And so I just can't speak to that right here.
But in terms of the building itself, I mean, the hiring process and things like that are gonna have to come after the fact, after the building is built out and they move through that. So they can still comply with that in the future?
Yeah, but there's like bike racks, so there's some weird little nuances that I want to check, and I haven't, I haven't gone through. I just knew that, like I said, I just, approval was yesterday, so it just got put in the system today.
Got it.
Okay, so our petitioner, you do have an opportunity for final remarks to counsel.
Regarding the rooftop garden, I'm glad this got brought up, because before I started building, I had a question about rooftop gardens. Live roof had a limit of when you can have a live roof installed and delivered because of frost. Once it freezes out, you can't do anymore. And as the deadline was approaching, I knew I was gonna be open before spring. So I messaged, I sent Joe several emails one week. I said, Joe, this is the last week I can have a rooftop garden delivered before spring. If I send you the paid invoice for rooftop garden, will this count as me fulfilling, you know, my, you know, criteria for having a rooftop garden installed? Or does it need to be on the roof? And Joe just never answered. Sent him another email, another email, and he just got an answer. So I went down there to his office, and he closed the door. So I talked to Christopher, I was like, what's up with Joe? I don't know. He's like, well, they're just under, you know, pressure or whatever. So I just, so you know what, I'm not gonna deal with this. I'm just gonna order the rooftop garden, have it delivered, and I'll put it on the roof and like lay it out, spread it all over the roof. I just want to assemble it into one, you know, 500 square foot area. So if anybody says anything, it's there, you just gotta move it into one unit, so it's paid for, it's delivered, it's on the roof. It's just not in, you know. The only thing I haven't done in the commitment is solar, which we're also having a problem with the city. I've had several problems to the billing department. They've tried to pull permits now for a month. I'm not sure what the permitting process holdup is, but they only need one day to install it. So ours has also been paid for. We just haven't been issued the permit to install it. But again, I don't know why I didn't pull the permit on it, or it's not my name, but it's all done.
So do you have any final remarks?
I think that's it, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a final question, Mayor Proton, before we close the hearing and?
I'm just trying to summarize this and say that you have everything in place to finish the work that you committed to in the original permit application, and you have the money to do it.
Correct.
And the timeline for completion of that, when would you say you'd be able to open the doors?
Well, because of this, because I.
All things being normal at this point.
Our level one prequalification expires in 14 days.
Say that again.
Our level one prequalification expires in 14 days with the state. So if you guys grant us permission today, we'll move forward tomorrow with phase two. But if we don't get inspected and approved in the next 13 days, then we have to start over with phase one, so it could be three to eight weeks. So.
But it would be this spring.
Oh, for sure.
It's not gonna be 14 months or?
I gotta start paying rent in 30 days either way, so.
Right.
I'm either using the business to do it, or it's coming out of my money, so.
All set, everybody all set? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation and for being here. We're gonna close the hearing now and move to council discussion. So deliberation amongst council about the permit. Just make sure I'm looking this way, because you're by yourself today. Councilmember Simmons.
So I just want to say something that I think of as being general across probably many of these. So I just want to say it now, which is that it seems to me that we need to have greater clarity or make more specifications about what it means to cease operations. And to be clear about what happens before operations. And I think you're, what you seem to be alluding to in terms of policy around, like, a reach out to say, hey, we have some questions, we need an update, you know? And what that looks like. Like, I would rather there be a time, if there's, if there seems to be a concern about a gap in time, that there is a conversation that happens before we build on a big administrative mess, which is what I feel like we're in now. That's just my feeling on it, so.
I appreciate you.
So, yeah.
I echo your sentiments, I don't even have to repeat it, so I agree. Other discussion or comments from council as we hear are to deliberate or discuss. Mayor Proton?
I agree, I mean, that is a theme that runs through all of these appeals, in terms of, you know, the communication back and forth. And I'll bring that up in another one of these appeals. You know, it seems like Mr. Kraniak has had a changing landscape in terms of, you know, this project and rethinking it and trying to make do. I can appreciate that you have a much lower budget than some of the other applicants and opponents. And I can appreciate the thought of going into whether this is a reasonable venture to go into, given the changes that you've seen, so. I'm concerned about the notices that were given and the way they were presented. That's it.
Thank you. Further comments from council? No, anything? Just want to give everybody an opportunity. Yeah, I just, I agree with my peers. All right, so if there's no further discussion, this is our opportunity for someone to make a motion and for us to render a decision. I believe everyone has the memo in front of them with the language around both, both motions that can be put forward. And I will open the floor for a motion, because I cannot make one.
I move to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit to the Worst License LLC at 705 West Cross Street. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, discussion, any? Councilmember Simmons?
I would also like to add the, what is that, when you give money back, that $1,000, $100? Reimburse, add it to that, too.
I would like to see that as well. Is that, could that be a friendly amendment? Are you all both supportive of that?
Supportive, yeah.
So clerk, can you restate the motion, just so that it's clear for the audience as well?
So it's, I move to allow the appeal of direct staff to issue the permit for 705 West Cross Worst License LLC and refund the appeal fee of $1,100.
Correct. Any further discussion on the motion? I apologize. Seeing none, clerk, please call the room.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tewson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Will Coxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with six, yes, one absence.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, and good luck, congratulations. No problem.
Good luck.
So next, we will call the District LLC, also Skymint at 401 East Michigan Ave. We'll start with our report from staff. Sorry, Joe, you're back again. Yes, thank you.
Good evening, council. Right now, we're talking about 401 East Michigan Avenue, also known as Clucks currently. To give you a little bit of background, the site plan was approved in the site on July 2022. A marijuana permission permit was issued on September 22nd, 2022. There was no timeline to open as the rubric went away with the ordinance update. And based on the approval from Planning Commission, detailed engineering review has not begun. Approved building plans have not even been submitted or issued a certificate of occupancy. And so the reason for denial was failure to provide a state license and a facility ceased to operate in 120 days.
All right, that's all you got for us right now? Thank you. Okay, our petitioners, this is your opportunity to present to council. Good evening.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Nathan Kark, Director of Government Affairs with Skymint, or I should say District Park LLC doing business at Skymint. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. However, I would like to say that it'd be much better if we were talking about something else other than the reinstatement of our local operating permit. But nonetheless, thank you for taking the time to consider this and hear our appeal this evening. I have to say that when we received the city's letter of denial, the January 6th letter stating the reasons for denial, we're very surprised. Hadn't heard anything from the city at that point in time. And at that point, we were moving forward towards a slated open date of Q3 2023. So just coming up in the process right now for later this year. And the city cited reasons of failure to provide a state license, just like the previous applicant that was up here, and also for ceasing operations in excess of 120 days. And that's our facility ceasing operations in excess of 120 days, as stated in the letter. So there's a couple of different things that we need to go through there, and I want to go through each one of those reasons for denial individually. And in a nutshell, I think that this was just a misunderstanding and misinterpretation of the ordinance by the city. And I'm happy to go through these individually here. First and foremost, the city stated reason for denying our application is that we failed to provide a valid state license. I want to point out that when we applied, we were compliant from the beginning. And had we still had a valid state license or a valid local operating permit right now, we still would have been compliant to this day. Secondly, given the time between when we were actually approved for our local operating permit, which Joe previously noticed was September 22nd of 2023. permit, which Joe previously noticed was September 22nd of 2022, to December of 2022, and we had to renew our permit, that was only a two-month timeframe. So to go from not being able to provide a state license to providing a state license within a two-month timeframe is completely impossible, and I'll detail that more a little bit going forward. But first and foremost, I say that we were in compliance because under Chapter 7 of the city's marijuana ordinance, it says that an applicant must file for an application for a permit, which we did. An applicant must file for an application for renewal, which we did. We paid our application fee. We got that in in time. And the ordinance also specifies that we can either provide a prequalification letter or a state license, which at the time of both of those applications, we provided a prequalification letter. And I have to say, from doing business with our company in 24 different municipalities throughout the state, that either-or language is included in ordinances, basically just to acknowledge that applicants are going to be at various different stages in their approval process. And where we happened to be at that time, like I said, it was completely impossible for us to actually have a valid state license. So in our case, we were completely compliant, but the city still fails to acknowledge that we did provide that prequalification letter, which I think under the ordinance actually serves as that state license, because it says that we're actively qualified and heading towards being approved for that state license. So I think we need to take in consideration also that this was completely impossible for us to comply with if we were supposed to have a state license. And I say that because several different items have to take place. We have to complete an item list of checklist items. We have to actually apply for a state license. And then from there, we have to allow the CRA, which could really be 90 days to process that. And I think that's just unreasonable within a two-month timeframe. So in essence, the city was basically by denying us for failure to perceive a state license. They're saying that in two months, we had to have demolition done on the site. We had to have construction of our one and a half million dollar building complete on the site. We had to receive certificate of occupancy. And only then would we have been able to go forward and actually submit an application for a state license. Believe me, the CRA, I've worked with them many times, the State Cannabis Regulatory Agency would not have even looked at our application, let alone approved it, had we not done all of those things first. Following that, we would have to go forward and actually go through various state and local inspections, which, again, makes it completely impossible to do within a two-month timeframe. So I would implore this board to understand that that is exactly why the ordinance allows for this temporary, or I should say, prequalified letter to be submitted as well. And that's just in contemplation of moving forward for a 2023 open date, which we are under process with. So that's what I have on the first condition. I want to move forward to discuss the city's second reason for our denial, which was that our facility ceased operations in excess of 120 days. Again, you know, operating in various communities throughout the state, this is not uncommon language, we've seen this multiple times, and we've demonstrated that our operations are 100% compliant with that, in that the intent behind provisions like this is that if, for whatever reason, a facility opens, becomes operational, and that's the standard, I would say uniformly recognized statewide, is that the city then has a mechanism to claw license back in the event that an operator, for whatever reason, ceases operations for an extended period of time. In the instance of Ypsilanti here, it's 120 days. But the city has very good reasons, I think, to want to do this. And it really just goes to ensure that, since this is a limited license, that the city just makes sure that people aren't just sitting on these limited licenses and not doing anything with them. And additionally, it also ensures that there's not vacant storefronts. I think we can all agree that vacant storefronts are something that none of us in this room actually desire. So, but I think the thing to point out there, and actually, this is a fairly simple explanation, because the way that this is laid out, our facility actually would have had to have been open and operational for us to cease operations. So I'd be kind of curious to hear how the city is viewing our operations date, since we never became operational and we're shooting to do so later this year in 2023. But it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I think this was done arbitrarily and without a whole lot of logistics, I should say, just logic and thought and reason behind it. So for these reasons, I just conclude by saying, you know, I appreciate you guys taking the time. Those, I hope, offer some explanation for why we are appealing this evening. First and foremost, we are very excited to be joining.
To this property, rats, as you've heard. And there's just simply no way this project could have been finalized with a certificate of occupancy within 180 days of the original permit. And that had to be known to the city at the time that it issued the yes on this to give us time to actually finish this project. Now we're looking at being done sometime within the springtime. We're hoping if all things continue on the right timeline. We lost a few weeks because of this issue. Certainly, why are we investing more money if the city's doing this? Probably leading towards litigation if that were the case, and we don't want to say that. But that's what, you know, a lot of us have to consider, given the investment. But under the circumstances, we're really hoping, like the others, you'll see through this process. Had they communicated, had they asked questions, all this evidence and all this information, affidavits from the project managers, well as the contractor, all this would have been available and would have negated the letter on the face of it. Instead, we're wasting time, energy, and effort to come in and make this appeal and wasting your time as well. And it's really shameful that that's the case. But we're here to answer questions. We're here to ensure that you get all those questions answered satisfactory. And we're hoping that this can be resolved pretty quickly. We appreciate the reimbursement of the money for having to come here. And certainly we look forward to responding to anything else that says to add and to question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is the opportunity for council to ask the petitioner questions. Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, so this is just a quick question. I don't know if it's best for you or someone else, but is it possible? So when doing the application and, you know, for the different days, I'm like getting lost in all the days. But is it possible to actually put forward, like, okay, yes, we know that this project is going to take more than four months, right? Like from start and just to put that up front? I'm just wondering if that's part of what that looks like.
I think one of the issues we didn't know is how distressed the property really is until you're digging in and going further and doing the rest of the due diligence on the land. The environmentals, of course, put in, along with the engineering, added a whole bunch of time that wasn't expected. Had we gotten early engineering approval, that would have sped everything up by four or five months. Instead, we got tidied up in that. Had we not had to do environmental remediation that came about as we proceeded on this project, that certainly would have, you know, been. So we work with the factors we have with the best intentions. But then again, from the timeframe, we actually can actually move a brick and do some work. We're dealing with it hand in hand with the city. At no point was this not communicated. Also remind the council that we were renewed in December of 21 under the same circumstances, same facts. That, you know, so these questions didn't come up then. Certainly would have addressed them. But one year later, when we're asking for the continued renewal after spending a million and a half dollars in reliance upon the prior approval, that was the punch in the gut and quite surprising. Our clients have acted in good faith. They've done the work. It's evident from the street, let alone if you wanted to go and explore what's going on there. And certainly, we would like to give as much of a reasonable timeframe as we best can. And then circumstances will dictate why things might change along the way. Hope I answered your concerns.
Yeah, and so now you said, what were you saying would be for the spring that you would expect?
We're 70% done. We're finishing some of the interior work. We'll be getting our certificate of occupancy, we hope by, I think, May-ish? Yeah, by May, if everything continues on time. A couple of the issues would be some of the exterior work we really can't do until we have a thaw and those kind of things. But that'll all happen with the same rate of speed that you're seeing from this group. You can see from the work, you'll see who's involved in the weekly meetings, their head and the attention is certainly given to it. This is not done with waste or nuisance, time, or any of that. The whole team's invested in their blood, sweat, and tears to come into the city of Ypsilanti and make this decrepit parcel something that's super cool in a place that is now a viable business from what was that, a rat-infested decrepit property.
Thank you. Further questions for the petitioner from council? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. One item that appears in all of the Huntington Construction Weekly Notes is a site visit to be scheduled with OHM and City of Ypsilanti to manage expectations and ensure appropriate inspection schedule. This is last mentioned on the entry for November 30th of 2022. Did that site visit ever happen?
Yeah, Joe, you wanted to speak to that? This is Joe Butler with Huntington Construction. He's the one that signed it up there.
So OHM was the advisors for the site work. So that was for all of the sanitary and the sewer system, as well as compaction, as well as backfill and the retainage in the back. So all of the, all of those meetings happened. OHM was onsite, taking their own inspections, doing their own reports, which I'm sure are also available through the city. There was, I fail to remember the individual's name from the city that was assigned to the project, but he ended up retiring or switching jobs or whatever it may be. But we don't have a direct respondent from the city of Ypsilanti any longer. I've been working directly with Larry Stevens from Eastfield Township, who City of Ypsilanti uses for building inspections, moving forward for any of our interior work and our immediate exterior work.
So Frank retired.
And you've been Frank, yeah.
Yeah, and you've been doing that. It, and it looks like Andy Amott had met with you at some point as well.
Yep. Andy was the one, he was on all of the original communications. And then I just started getting email kicked back saying that the email doesn't exist any longer. Wasn't really notified who else was going to be taking their position. But we have been in communication, like I said, with Larry Stevens.
Got it. That's all I have.
Any further questions? All right, any rebuttal from staff?
Nope.
All right, any final remarks from petition?
Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to discuss this and have this conversation. Really wish it was avoided by being able to communicate directly with the city manager's office. We were disappointed. We didn't even get a reply or better understand why we were denied. Nonetheless, we appreciate it. We would like to, of course, have this reversal and then allow our permit to proceed and then, of course, reimburse the 1,100. And I don't know if you want to say anything or we're all set? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, so the hearing is closed and now we will have discussion. I guess I'll just start by saying that, you know, I am aware of the work, particularly with this site that's been happening. Have seen it, have had an opportunity to speak with the partners. This is just a communication issue also, I believe. That's one of the things that we need to look at going forward. And maybe we can have a conversation about this once we get through these to not like, you know, extend our time here for folks who are waiting for their appeals. But even in the letter, I couldn't see in the attachment, like, what the actual highlighted. Out of one through nine, it was for this particular one. So if it was only the 120 days, I think that is the biggest issue, right? That what does 120 days mean? We need to clarify that this is a theme. And so that is, to me, an issue on our part to be, you know, good partners and good neighbors to make sure that we don't have issues like this going forward. And again, we are, we are learning. I get it. But yeah, we're spending time here that I don't think we need to. Any discussion from council?
I agree.
Thank you.
Just a comment. It's not my regular running route. And so I've been talking with the guys who are doing the work in the morning. And it's been great to see the changes. And I was kind of curious sometimes when it was like you'd see something disappear and then it was like, okay, now what's going on? This is like, so.
Yeah, lots of work, lots of work happening. Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is I'm looking at all these addresses. So many of them are in Ward Three, which is my ward. I just am like noticing that. This one's right down the street too, so anyhow.
If there is not further discussion on the hearing, then I will entertain a motion for a decision.
Let's see here, okay. I move to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit and reimburse the $1,100 for the appeal application for Guy Three Ventures LLC at 214 West Forest.
Support.
It's a move and supported. Is there any discussion? All right, just have to ask. Seeing none, I'll please call the roll clerk.
Councilmember Tewson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons or Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Thank you all so much. Have a good evening. Thank you. All right, moving on. Next, we have, I don't know if I'm saying Tama Ventures, Tama Ventures LLC, 915 West Michigan Ave. Staff?
Good evening.
Good evening. So a little bit of background on this proposal. The marijuana permit was issued on August 19th, 2021. The timeline to open in that was one month. The approved site plan happened on September 20th, 2021. There was no detailed engineering review required because there was not intended to be any changes to the physical site. They have not received a, the original building plans were approved on December 10th, 2021. There's been no certificate of occupancy. This one, and I'm going a little off script because this one had a citation issued due to excess junk around the property. That went to court and a default judgment was entered on September 8th, 2022. And so the reasons for denial were one or more violations of the city, of any city ordinance on the premises, maintenance of a nuisance on the property, non-payment of real or personal property taxes, fines, fees, liens owed to the city, failure to provide a state license. And if the facility ceases operation within 120 days, I will tell you, I checked this morning and the fine for the blight violation has not been picked currently.
All right, this is the opportunity for our petitioner to present. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear our view. My name's Nicholas Culkins on behalf of Tama Ventures LLC.
You can do the mic, please.
Sure, is that better? I, my appeal papers, I think, laid out a good background for the council. And I tried to give a good chronology of what has occurred at the site since we got the building permit approval on December 10th, 2021. And I'd like to go through each of the allegations in the denial letter, point by point, as laid out in my appeal. First and foremost, as Joe mentioned, there was one or more violations of any city ordinance on the premises. A letter was issued to Tama Ventures on, excuse me, July 7th of 2022. It states that there is litter at the property. There is an accumulation of trash, junk, or debris. And I actually recall getting a copy of this letter. Mr. Awada had sent it to me upon receipt. And we immediately contacted the general contractor. So the reason for the debris pileup was because we were in the midst of demolition for the building. Not that this is acceptable, but it did occur. And when we were provided notice of it, we immediately rectified the issue. The letter does state that 14 days later, the property is scheduled for reinspection. I was unaware that a blight default judgment ultimately entered with the court. Because when I followed up with the city, the property was clean. So if there's an outstanding ticket that needs to be paid, we'll happily pay that ticket. I did today, I checked BSA Online. We looked at the property tax records. We looked at the personal property tax records. We looked at the building department records to see if any fees were due. Nothing was due as of today. If there's an outstanding blight ticket that entered, we'll happily pay that. However, I'm going to look further into this because at no time were we provided notice of that default judgment. In fact, following July 21st, 2022, I had received zero correspondence from the city with regard to this issue. And I followed up to clarify that it in fact had been taken care of. We've kept that property pristine ever since. I had a meeting with the general contractor and explained, you know, just how particular we need to be with the site as we go through our developmental phase. So I'll move into the next allegation in the denial letter, and that is maintenance of a nuisance on the premises. Now, the letter, the denial letter didn't detail what this particular nuisance was, how it was created, or any really detail at all. So I could only infer that this kind of dovetailed with the blight violation related to the debris pileup. I could be unsure, and I'm happy to receive clarification if that isn't the case. But at no time have we ever maintained a nuisance on the property. I don't know how much of you know in general the history of the property, but it's been blighted for a period of years. There's significant blight violations that had accrued with the property prior to our purchase. It was owned individually by a gentleman named Calvin West. When that property was purchased, everything was cleaned up. We actually paid some of those prior blight violations when we transferred the property, just to try to kind of clean the books, so to speak. The issue or the allegation regarding non-payment of real and or personal property taxes, fines, fees, or liens owed to the city, I now would infer is based on this outstanding blight judgment that entered unbeknownst to us. As I stated before, and as of today's date, BSA Online doesn't show any property taxes due to the city, including personal or real property, or anything owed to any city departments. Six and nine in the letter are similar to what we've heard before from some other appellantants. That's failure to be provided a state license and the facility ceased operations for 120 days. I mean, that's accurate. The facility doesn't have a license. As a global update, today, we actually had final building inspections for the property with Mr. Larry Stevens. All rough trades are approved. And per my understanding is that Larry is going to recommend a partial final certificate of occupancy. So for any of you who haven't driven by the facility as of late, it's 99% of the way done. And I think really what's standing in between the applicant's ability to go forward, to receive the certificate of occupancy, and to apply to the state for step two, go through those inspections, and then get state license so they can open their doors, it's a matter of the council giving that permission at today's appeal hearing. I will happily take any questions from the council and look forward to your decision on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, questions from council? Mayor Protem?
Nobody else, I don't ask. So you're 99% done. Obviously, your state license is going to depend on you getting the certificate of occupancy and this permit because they changed the rules and flip-flopped that a couple of years ago. But so you're anticipating with the usual bureaucracy from the state level, date of opening and licensure?
So if we call today as March 1st, I mean, we're probably 60 days, give or take. That's max.
Depending on the processing from law.
Correct. So actually, last Friday, I had a meeting with Ms. Andrews to introduce myself and just kind of go over the project to make sure that we're on the same page going forward. I know there's a few issues she wants to look into and that we're working through right now. But it sounds like we're really close. So that timeline is subject to receipt of the certificate of occupancy. And then from there, you essentially plug that into a state application for step two. Hey, we're done with the building. We have our certificate. We have all other approvals necessary. Please come and inspect the property. That takes, you know, one to two weeks, just depending on the availability of the inspector. They'll come out and typically, you know, they're going to issue a report within one to two days of them inspecting the property. Hopefully, we pass. If we don't, rectifying any of the remaining issues from the state level is probably a matter of five to seven days. At that point in time, they'll issue an invoice. We pay the invoice. We're officially state licensed. At that time, then we have to get inventory and get some employees and do some training, right? And gear up for a soft opening so that we can have a great first impression on the city and the residents. And that period is about two to three weeks, as far as merchandising and getting the inventory ready. And that's why I say 60 days is a good rough estimate.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right, thank you. Rebuttal from staff?
Staff doesn't have any other questions.
My only question is about the fine. So you're saying there still is one, I'm hearing that there is not one that they're aware of. How does that work?
Our AHB fines do not show up in BSNA. And so it's an AHB fine that is owed.
And?
It's not their tax.
Okay. And so how are?
Notice has been sent because it does get assessed to the property owner. And so notices have been sent to the property owner.
The property owner, okay. Thank you.
And how?
You have a question in one second. Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how much is this fine?
I think just under $500, 460.
Additional questions for staff?
Who received the notice? Not anybody in this room.
The notice, the original notice was sent to the property owners, the actual applicant, which they did receive. And then when it actually goes to be assessed to the property, and there's the property owner that is required to show up in court because that's who we have the ability to assess fees to.
And that's when the default came or that was?
Default, yeah, the default.
The property owner didn't show up? All right. In the room, thank you. You can come on back and respond and give final remarks, please.
Wanted to just request actually a copy of that notice that went out. I don't know if we were the property owner at the time it was issued. And Tama Ventures LLC is not the property owner, although the member of Tama does own the property through a separate real estate holding company. So, you know, there's no bad faith on our part and we'll rectify the fine that is due. I'd like to dig a little further into this because we don't want to miss any important correspondence, of course. But I just wanted to get a copy of that letter if I could, but I'll follow up with Joe after the meeting and just, again, implore you to allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the hearing will now be closed and it's council discussion time.
I mean, I pass this property almost every day going to work and school. And like they originally said, it was owned by, it was originally Cow's. And then after that business went away, it did look very bad. So to see that it was being, you know, rebuilt and it looks very nice now. So it looks, it gives an extra nice bright shine on Ward One, so, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that stands out to me about this particular project is the additional safety features that are coming with the project. And we were, we were looking forward to having that, especially on that corner. And I do, I see the changes daily, daily. And I was very impressed with what I've seen, so, yeah.
Any other discussion, comments, feedback from council? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit and refund the $1,100 appeal fee.
Support.
Moved and supported. I'm going to assume there's no discussion, but I'm going to ask, discussion?
Well, I mean, this might be like too much. I was just going to say, like, pending the payment of this $410, but, I mean.
Got that?
I mean, Mr. Burr, would that be, is that allowed? Yeah, I don't know the law like that, so let me make sure.
I believe that you could make a contingent on payment of the fine or whatever it is. There is a provision in the charter that says you should not contract with any person that's in default with the city. This is really not a contract, but I believe that would be in the process.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll support that.
All right, so is that a friendly? Mayor Protem and Councilmember?
True, I support it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, clerk, you can call the roll once you are ready.
Okay. Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tewson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, good luck, and please pay the fine.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, our last hearing is for Cross Street Services, 513 West Cross.
Staff, take it away.
Good evening, council. This should be the last time maybe I come before you today. This one's a lot shorter. So this, this facility has been open and operational since 2011, I'm pretty sure. So it's predated me, but I'm pretty sure that's when they opened. The issue with this one is the tax, property taxes were not paid on the parcel for 2021 and 2022 when the letters were issued. The taxes were paid on February 2nd, 2023. So the reason for denial was non-payment of real or personal property taxes.
All right.
And instead of going for rebuttal, they have been paid. They were paid after the denial was in town.
Thank you. Presentation from the petitioner. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Joel, and I represent the petitioner, Cross Street Services.
My name is Benjamin Joel, and I represent the petitioner, Cross Street Services, also known as the shop on Cross Street. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you all and city staff for your time and service to your community and the ability to present to you tonight. I do have a longer speech to give, but I could stop right now if you feel that it's necessary. Again, the reason for the denial was real and personal, was real and personal property taxes. All of those were paid upon notice by the city. In fact, the real property taxes are the landlord's responsibility under the lease, but as soon as CSS was notified that those property taxes hadn't been paid, CSS went and paid them. So, I mean, I can continue on, or we could move through this. So, look, I believe that council should direct staff to issue the CSS permit because CSS does meet all the requirements of the ordinance. CSS is a family-run cannabis dispensary that's been properly licensed by the city since 2011. The city recently denied their 11th application for renewal of their permit due to the unpaid real and property taxes. As soon as that was brought to the appellant's attention, they went to the city and they paid those taxes. To shut down a small, local, family-owned business that's been operating in the community for over a decade would be a travesty and inequitable solution that will effectively shut them down forever, bankrupt this family, and deprive their ability to give back to the community, which they so graciously do. I want to share with you the facts of this appeal, who the proprietors of this business are, and what they do with this, for this community. So CSS did submit a complete application, paid city renewal fees, and is in compliance with all aspects of the ordinance. After submitting the renewal application to the city, they received nothing. They did not hear anything. Until January 12th, they received a form letter from the city noting that their application had been denied. In fact, it is my understanding that the form letter wasn't even highlighted. CSS members immediately came down to the city and said, why did we get this denial? There, they were informed that it was due to unpaid personal property taxes in an amount less than $230. CSS immediately paid those taxes. They then hoped to get their renewal permit, and when that did not come, they went back down to the city, and they asked why it had been denied, and they said it well was because of the real property taxes on the parcel where it's located. Again, under the terms of the lease, the landlord is responsible for those real property taxes, but CSS immediately paid those taxes upon notice by the city. You know, unfortunately, then city staff informed them that the denial had been issued and that the only way to renew their permit would be come in front of you and appeal tonight. So that's what we're doing here. Now, governmental organizations usually allow a period for renewal applicants to cure any deficiencies in their applications. Unfortunately, the Ypsilanti City Ordinance is silent to this fact. However, if we look at the state, when you do a cannabis application at the state, they do send you deficiency notices, and they give you at least five business days to cure those notices. In fact, if you're doing a renewal application, they give you up to 60 days after the expiration of the license to even submit and cure all deficiencies in that. Had we have been following state laws, CSS would have received their notice. You know, to shut down a compliantly operating business that served its community for 11 years would be an inequitable and unjust solution. And, you know, furthermore, I do want to share with you who CSS is. CSS is a small, deep-rooted, local family business. They're not a conglomerate. They're not a franchise. They're not private equity-backed. They don't have 24 stores. This is their only facility. The owners of this facility, most of them are here with me tonight. Unfortunately, one of them couldn't make it because he does have COVID. But they are Amy and Lisa Snyder and Lisa's son, Jobe Rakowski. Jobe is a lifelong Ypsilanti resident, graduated from Ypsilanti Community Schools, and still coaches youth baseball in the community. Jobe was actually a star baseball player until he started to develop pains, which was later diagnosed as rheumatoid arthritis. When medical marijuana became legal in Michigan, he started using it to alleviate his symptoms. And then in 2011, the family, with the blessing of a dispensary license from the city, opened up the shop at 513 West Cross Street. It's been in existence ever since because they wanted to help the community the way that this had helped Jobe. So the other owners of the facility that are here are Lisa Snyder, Jobe's mother. Lisa, again, is a lifelong community member. She grew up in Willis Township. She moved to Avondale Street in 1995, where she raised her children, and where she also worked at Ypsilanti Community Schools for 25 years. It's actually at Ypsilanti Schools where she met her current husband, Amos, who's also here. He also is a lifelong community member, graduate of Ypsilanti Community Schools, and then returned to work there for 25 years, eventually retiring as the chief custodian and union steward. Amos's son is Marcus Snyder. Marcus Snyder is married to the other owner, Lisa Snyder. Lisa grew up in neighboring Ann Arbor and moved to Willis, or actually moved to Ypsilanti and then Willis, when she married Marcus in 1995. Marcus is also on the state application, and he is another lifelong Ypsilanti resident. He graduated from Ypsilanti Community Schools, and like his father before him, he returned to Ypsilanti Community Schools to work for another 12 years. Between them, they have over 60 years of service to Ypsilanti Community Schools, and they have over 11, almost 12 years of serving this community through the cannabis shop. And that's not all they do. Counsel, by directing staff to issue the CSS permit, will not only keep intact a deep-rooted local family business, but will also allow the members of CSS to continue to be able to serve the youth of this community. Lisa, Amy, Jobe, Amos, and Marcus's true passion is helping young athletes gain confidence, opportunities, and life lessons through sport. CSS and their family members have actually been involved in Ypsilanti Community softball and baseball for decades. And through some of the profits of CSS and their own hard work, they were able to start a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but it's called Intruders Fast Pitch Softball Academy. Intruders Fast Pitch Softball Academy provides free services to the youths of this community, which includes organizing teams, jerseys, equipment, tournament fees, travel expenses, and other expenses associated with the sport. In fact, since they started in 2014, they've helped nearly 100 young women gain college scholarships at institutions across this nation. Additionally, Amy and Marcus, again, because they run CSS, were able to invest also with the help of their family and friends in creating a softball diamond at their personal residence and an indoor batting facility. And they make these facilities open to all Ypsilanti Community School children free of charge. If you shut down CSS, you're effectively shutting down Intruders Fast Pitch Softball. You're effectively bankrupting a family. This council has the ability to grant this appeal and stop all of that from happening. Again, if council does not do that, you're shutting down a business, bankrupting a family, and depriving this community of a beloved, privately-commissioned, and funded resource. But if you don't do that, you allow them to continue to serve this community as they have for nearly 75 years, through their 60 years of Ypsilanti Public Schools, and their 12 years through Cross Street Services. And you allow them to keep their 501(c)(3) organization going and serving the youth of this community and helping better the lives of the next generation of Ypsilanti residents. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to approve this appeal.
Thank you. Questions from council to the petitioner? Mayor Protem?
The theme running through the evening is lack of communication. In this case, it's a little bit different in terms of tenant landlord relationship. What can be done to bridge that communication gap? I mean, so this has been two years that the property taxes haven't been paid, and so I'm curious about how to go through that.
Well, I think it's a good.
Let's cut his hand up easily.
Would you like to say something? Absolutely. This is Marcus Snyder.
To a new agreement, which we are going to be paying triple net. So we personally, as a business, are responsible for those independent taxes instead of relying on him.
So this is a net lease instead of a gross lease?
Now, it's going to be a triple net lease to repay all our property taxes, liability, insurance, and stuff on the property, and don't count on him as well. That way, we don't have this problem no more.
Sounds good. Thank you.
If I may make a suggestion, as I kind of said, the state law, what they do is, and one of the things is, and again, as we're talking about communication, is if we do get a renewal application, if it is deficient in certain aspects, maybe the same thing the state is, which is issue a letter and say, hey, you have five business days to correct this, as in, your taxes weren't paid. You have five business days to correct this. And, you know, obviously, as soon as they received notice, they paid them, right? Even though under the lease, it wasn't their responsibility, but again, they're good stewards. They are members of this community, and they care about this community. So, you know, I think maybe a process like that being implemented would be very helpful and would avoid having, you know, a two-hour hearing such as this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion or questions? I mean, for the petitioner. Okay. Thank you. We don't have a rebuttal because Joe already gave it. Any final remarks for us?
We'll wait.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the hearing is closed. Discussion from council? I'll entertain a motion.
All right. I move to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit to Cross Street Services at 413 West Cross. Was there, and refund the appeal fee of $1,100.
Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? I'm going to probably say no, but I have to ask.
I was just, this was the biggest surprise to me, that after 11 years, that this would come about. And I'm like, you know, that strikes me as really odd, so.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wolcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries, six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for your service and your business to the community. We need you. All right. All right, friends. We are now moving on to our resolutions. Wait, nope. That's Mayor Protem Wolcoxen. You have our first resolution tonight.
I apologize for the late submission of this. I worked on this over the weekend, and I had to go through a couple of checks with the city clerk and the city assessor to make sure this was compliant with state law, that it had been done. And then this was released today. I'm not sure if anybody, everybody had a chance to look at it, but basically, it encapsulates, let me read it first. And I'm not going to read this whole thing. But Resolution number 2023-028, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the adoption of guidelines for poverty exemptions is required of the city council, and whereas the principal residents of persons who the assessor and board of review determines by reason of poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemption in part from taxation under Public Act 390 of 1994, MCL 211.7U. And is it okay if I skip down to the relevant parts here, Mayor? You'll notice that after the beginning of the paragraph on the first page, all income assets for persons in the household are reported in accordance with the form prescribed by the state tax commission. And then there's a number of.
I'm sorry, can you read it into the record and then just after that, point out the things that change? Is that possible?
The whole thing?
No, like, say, we'll read the rest into the record.
Ah, gotcha. We will read the rest in the record. Thank you.
And move it.
My eagerness to jump forward on this.
It's been moved. Okay. Now, you can give us the changes.
All right. So the numbered items. Number one, some of these things were just rearrangements of what it was so that you could track it easier. Number one is unchanged. Number two, the following additional documents, that is unchanged down through to E. Three is where the changes come into effect. And so 3A, the board of review has the authority to reduce the current year taxable value 100% or 50% or 25%. We had talked about this in a couple meetings. Courtney had gone back and checked that and found that that was the case. B, basically summarizes the formulas for that relief in terms of taxable value shall be reduced by 25% if the income is equal to or greater than 75% of the poverty level set by the governing body, which is the city of Ypsilanti. Taxable value shall be reduced 50% if the income is greater than 100% of the federal poverty level and less than 75% of the poverty level set by the governing body. Taxable value shall be reduced by 100% if the income is less than 100% of the federal property tax. Now, this is different than what was, what I sent out with the spreadsheet, because that was based on Ann Arbor's poverty levels, and it just doesn't work with ours because they were overlapping ranges. And that's due to the fact that we generally have less income than people in Ann Arbor. So then there's the table that has the Ypsilanti poverty guidelines. There's the federal guidelines. The Ypsilanti poverty guidelines are based on 30% of the area AMI, and those are the numbers based on 2022 values from HUD. There were, no, that's pretty much it for that. So those are the ranges. Number four, we had discussed changing the $25,000 value for that in looking at this. If, my original proposal was that we mirror the federal poverty guidelines for the asset values, but then that came up to the fact that people would be able to have $100,000 in income and assets and still be relieved of their property taxes. And that just seemed like a lot to me. So I put this back in at the $25,000 level that was already there. There's a statement here that the applicant shall not have ownership interest in any real estate other than the primary residence being considered for exemption. And that's fairly straightforward. Under A, in which the assets that are being considered, it says a second home, additional land not associated with primary residence, or other buildings other than the primary residence being sought for exemption. And that's just, you know, to some extent redundant for the home, but then this also includes other buildings and properties. So, and then all of that is just from the state and is consistent with what we did last year. Consistent, number five is consistent with last year, that this will be granted on a yearly basis and have to reapply. There are provisions in the state law that we can extend these for certain circumstances for up to three years, but I chose not to put that in here because that would create a whole nother layer of bureaucracy for the city staff to manage that. And I thought that this was the easiest way to go about doing that. Number six was removed, and that was a statement about notice being sent ahead of the March board of review. And it was pointed out that we just don't have the time to do that. I spoke with city clerk Andrew about what the cost on that would be, and so those estimates are there. We just don't have the time to do that and to be consistent for the people in March and later in the year. It was removed, but suggested that we look at this again in August for next year so that we can get that out. And then at that point, it can go out with the assessments and include it in that. But we still need to know what the cost on that is, and by August, we'll have a good sense of how much that would cost and put that into the assessment. So that's what I've got.
Thank you so much. Discussion. Questions from council, clarifications, anything? Thank you for the work that you've done on that, Mayor Protem. I mean, it's a lot, and it's confusing. Councilmember Sweet?
I just echo what Mayor Brown said. I know that this has been a long time coming to get this to where it is now. And I know that you've taken the extra step to get it to what it is tonight from where we started. So, looks good.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wolcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Ryan's moving on. The city manager does have her hand raised.
Yeah. Our apologies, city manager.
No problem. Good afternoon, or good evening, good night, mayor and city council. I want to thank you guys for taking out tonight to listen to these appeals. Everything I've heard, I've taken in so that we can make this process a better process. Just wanted to clarify a few things. This hasn't happened in 11 years, probably because those that were appealing are new dispensaries, except the last one, the Cross Street Station. And so we hadn't really had a problem, but this ordinance was the same. However, our current ordinance doesn't allow extensions or call for additional time if the requirement hasn't been made. So I think those suggestions from some of the attorneys are very good for us to go back and look at what the state is doing and possibly mirror, to mirror that and put that in our ordinance. But honestly, I was not comfortable setting or trying to set a policy or process without council actually seeing. So I believe council has seen what the issue is, and I don't want to be put in the position, excuse me, of having to choose which one I feel is making progress and which one I don't feel is making progress. But I think, I believe that if we go back and tweak our ordinance so that it's in black and white that says, you know, they're allowed an extension of so much time from their start date or whatever like that, we haven't had to do that because it hadn't been an issue. So I wanted to put that out there, so I appreciate you taking your time. I think it was time well spent. I learned some things as well. I hope that you did as well and don't feel that it was wasted time. But this is, this was a different situation. And so I appreciate everyone's attention and I think all the petitioners and staff are coming out tonight. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilmember Sweet, I believe you have the next resolution?
Yep. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the Police Officers Association of Michigan, POAM, collective bargaining agreement with the city expired on December 31st, 2022. And whereas the city and the union have been engaged in contract negotiations for a successor contract. And whereas the city and the union have reached a tentative agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement for the term commencing on January 1, 2023 and terminating on December 31st, 2025. And whereas the city desires to approve the new contract as presented, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Ypsilanti that the city council does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and the POAM for the term commencing in January 1, 2023 and terminating on January 31st, 2025 as presented and authorize the mayor, city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city after approval by the city attorney as to form. And I still move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion or questions? We have our chief here, if anything, but we have had the co-session already about this. So any questions or discussion on this before we vote? All right. Seeing none.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absent.
Thanks, everybody, for being here on our off Tuesday for the special meeting. Are you standing back here because you want to say something?[1770.22]